...a meeting to order at 7:02. Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Ferndale School Board of Education, held on February 22, 2016. Our meeting is being video-recorded for broadcast on cable throughout the next month, on a rotating schedule, and also on our YouTube channel. All meetings in the Ferndale Schools are held in public, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Printed documents discussed in tonight's meeting are available to the public on request, with the exception of any information protected by student or employee privacy rights. Sorry about that. Please turn off your phones for the -- okay. The board meeting information is posted at our website at www.ferndalschools.org. If you do not have Internet access and need information, please contact the board offices at (248) 586-8652 by Thursday of the week prior to the meeting, and district staff will do everything they can to work with you. And moving on, we have a roll call, please.
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. -- sorry.
Just to be clear, that trustee Toomey is representing the school and the school board at -- with the Pontiac School District, in supporting their sinking fund and Homestead Village. So, just so everyone knows where she is tonight.
And Ms. Butters is walking in now. We're all here, and we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving on to 1.3, the approval of the agenda. Everyone should have. Does anyone have any changes or objections to the agenda? Hearing none.
Just a note, this is a change, but the board book has been updated for the consent of the special meeting minutes. Just some minor technical corrections in the times and such.
For the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So with that one note, hearing no other objections, we can move forward with the roll call to accept the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Butters?
Yes.
Deacon Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
President LaPach?
Yes. Okay. Seven yes votes and no zero vote -- oh, I'm sorry, six yes votes. The agenda has been approved, and then we can move on to item number two, which is our presentation from our JFK principal, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully the mic can pick me up. I was going to present from over there, but I have some videos that I'm going to show you a little bit through the presentation. I want to be able to click on them from over there. We'll just wait for it to warm up. I'm coming to talk to you about two events or days. One has actually been a week-long event that we've had recently in the district and at JFK, Global School, a Global Day of Play, and also the Great Kindness Challenge. So we'll start off with the Great Kindness Challenge. This was a district-wide event. It was held from January 25th through 29th. Right there, as you can see, that's our mural. They're still up there right now, but those were the individual classrooms. Each teacher created a poster with their students about what they were going to do. So the Great Kindness Challenge, over 5 million participants, mostly in the U.S., but all over the world, and it was really, what can you do to spread kindness throughout your lives? So teachers presented students with that question, and there was a document from the organization of 50 different ways that you could show kindness, and then most classrooms had each student decide or pick an act of kindness that they could show all week long. And then obviously, hopefully, it would snowball and show kindness throughout the year, throughout their days, as part of their life. So here's a, you know, a close-up of one of those posters. The classroom was decorated. Each student signed their name to it, and then they talked about what they were going to do. So each class created one of these, and here's another one from it. Right there, in black and white, that is the document that I said the organization created, and it listed ways in which people could show kindness. So, without further ado, I'll let the kids do the talking. This class, we are participating in the Great Kindness Challenge.
We're going to smile at 25 people. We're going to learn how to say thank you in a different language.
We're going to put people on the screen.
We're going to cut out ten cards and put them on ten cards.
We're going to say good morning to five people.
I'm going to fly my dog.
I'm telling her that.
So we did have to deal with the Twitter limitation of only about 30 seconds to put that up there, so that's why we kind of had to go through a little bit fast there. And here is Mrs. Naej's class.
I am.
Bring it back.
I am. I am. I want 25 people.
You are helpful to a happy dad.
Pick up trash in your neighborhood.
Introduce someone with a happy dance.
Break for a little bread.
So that was the Great Kindness Challenge, and you can see there the hashtag. I'll show you later on how you can search and find a lot more pictures about this great event. And that was something that we did district-wide, and we hope to continue doing every year from now on, promoting that kindness to others. The other event I wanted to talk about was the Global School Day of Play. Lynn Dolman, one of our first-grade teachers at JFK, brought this to the administration, to Mrs. Rushlow's attention, and we've participated in it district-wide and at Kennedy as well. And the whole idea about this is no screens, no structure, play, and obviously, you can learn through play and enjoy play. And so games, toys were brought in through teacher emails to parents, and saying, hey, come on and bring it on in, and they did. You can see a little setup right there of them, and there were 177,000-some participants worldwide. So a lot of different classrooms worldwide participated in this as well. And so this is one of the pictures from Mrs. Coover's class, and she said, "The calm before the storm." Kids came in, and then they just played and had fun. Now, obviously, we talked to them during our morning meetings about how we play, what we do, how we invite others to play, how we solve our disagreements, because those are bound to happen, that kind of thing, and so we made sure that we talked about that as part of our classroom culture. Some teachers did a lengthy chunk of unstructured play, and some of the older classes did a little bit less time. Each teacher did their own amount of time as they saw fit, as they felt comfortable in dealing with their curriculum. One of the great lasting images right now, although the paint's starting to fade a little bit, is this area right here in the school, as part of it. The first and fifth graders got together during their peeps time, their mentorship time, and they helped create this new mural and painting that we have right here, and that was a great product of that unstructured play time. Here's some other pictures from some of the teachers' Twitter pages. Mrs. Jovanowski's first-grade class over there, and they also had some peeps come in playing with the dough and such. Now, Mrs. Coover also has a video here of the end-of-the-day conversation that she had afterwards. So she started talking to, what can you learn from this day of play?
Ms. Natalie, what did you learn from Global Day of Play?
Um, if you give up on a game, your brain's not getting any smarter.
Ah, if you give up on a game, your brain is not getting any smarter. That is something that we learned.
So, you know, you can learn through play. You can learn outside of school. You can learn inside of school. You can learn at lunch. You can learn anywhere and everywhere. There is a longer video that I have down at the bottom, about 10 minutes, and it's just a slideshow, but I'm not going to turn that one on, it's quite lengthy. But you can follow and search and find any of these pictures and more using the hashtag #FPSEaglePride in Twitter or on a Google search. You just type that in, and you'll see a lot of our great happenings, not only at JFK, but district-wide, too. Not only these two events, but a lot of other daily events that we have as well. What questions do you have? What's that noise? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I know my kids enjoyed both of those events very much, so. Especially the day of play.
That was a huge hit. Huge hit.
Oh, yeah. Except for they couldn't take any toys with batteries in, so they were like, oh, man.
Yeah.
But they got over there pretty quick. Thank you. Okay, now we get to move on to our student representatives, and we have Crystal Rivas from FHS tonight.
Hi. Good afternoon, or good evening. I just have a couple of dates that I wanted to let you guys get aware of, so in case you guys have your calendars or anything. This Wednesday, the 24th, we have our blood drive, our annual blood drive, in the media center, which is going to be run by our student government, and if you guys want to sign up at all, here. Thursday, March 3rd, we have our parent-teacher conferences from 5:30 to 8:30. Black History Month, we're kind of finishing that up. Throughout the month, we've been painting on the windows, in case you guys saw it as you walked in. We've been reading biographies daily during our announcements. We've been hanging up posters and really trying to spread the word, in a sense. Wednesday, March 9th, we have the eighth and ninth grade parents and students orientation in the auditorium, the FHS auditorium, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's, we're kind of just kind of bringing in the eighth and ninth graders, kind of showing them and touring them around the school, giving them a feel for what high school is going to be like when they come in. March 18th, we're hosting the Reality Store, which is for our juniors. It kind of gives them a look into the real world. They're given a sum of money and a career, and then given them, like, different tasks throughout. They have to buy, like, insurance. They have to buy, they have to pay for their water bills. It's basically like throwing them into the real world for a second and kind of having them deal with their money and how to manage it. That's going to happen on the 18th, and that's in the FHS gym. The musical, The Putnam County Spelling Bee, is March 18th and March 20th. On 20, the March 20th is a Sunday that will be held at 3:00 p.m. For on the 18th and 19th, it's going to be at 7:30 p.m. This past week, we had four wrestlers qualified for our Division II Regionals. We had Kobe Davis, Matt Ballard, Joseph Wellback, and Kobe Falls. Kobe Falls, in addition, was also qualified for the state tournament in, at the Palace of Auburn Hills, so we're kind of really proud of that, in the athletic points of view. But that's it. Does anybody have any questions, and any dates or anything? That's all for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight? And is Sanaisha Smith here? I'm just not seeing her.
No.
Nope.
She's not here tonight.
All right.
And our Eagle, Eagle in the Month is being postponed to next week, or next month, just because it's the day after break, we weren't able to get everyone together here.
Fair enough.
So we'll do double duty next week, next month, not next week.
Okay. That means we get to move on to item number five, which is the public comment this evening. This is the time for public participation in the meeting. The Board of Education intends for the public to have many opportunities to address the board and administration of their school district. These include email, phone calls, face-to-face meetings, community gatherings, public hearings, and other public meetings. We welcome individual and group input into these important issues that confront our schools. As noted at the top of the agenda tonight, this is a meeting of the school board, which is open to the public. We want to provide fair and impartial guidelines for participation, as required by the Open Meetings Act, and to encourage transparency and equal treatment for everyone in attendance. We also recognize that an effective meeting facilitates better decisions and promotes openness by allowing more people to stay for the length of the meeting. To meet these goals, please note the following. We ask that when you approach the podium, you identify yourself and list contact information on a comment sheet to help administrators follow up with you and your comment. If you don't wish to do so in writing, please let us know who you are when you come up to the podium, and if you want a response, please provide contact information before you go. I'll call on people who've completed a comment sheet first. Each person will have one opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes. Comments or questions should be directed to the board president. The secretary or vice president will raise her hand, his or her hand, when your time is within a few seconds of expiring. This period of public comment is for both non-agenda items and issues that are on the agenda. Public comments will end at the close of this part of the agenda. In the event that there are a number of people wishing to comment, we will proceed for 30 minutes and then put the rest on the end. Unless you all want to talk, I think we're good. Complaints about staff should be made outside of board meetings and should follow the applicable, the applicable board policy. Please contact the superintendent's office if you have any questions regarding this item. The board cannot respond to complaints about employees in public, which is meant to promote fairness to the staff person and to the complainant. And finally, the Ferndale Public Schools community acts with great civility towards one another. Please help us maintain that tradition during public comment. I do have one public comment card from Monique Kerzik, who would like to talk, I think, about the library.
Hello, everybody. My name is Monique Kerzik. I do actually have two kids in the district. I have one at Coolidge, who's very excited about coming over next year for the sixth grade, and I have one student who is a seventh grader in the middle school, but I'm here wearing my Ferndale Area District Library hat this evening, and I'm here to invite the board and the community to join us for either one Saturday early in the day, or in the evening next week for Community Spark. We would like to hear from you, what you would like to see from us as part of our planning for the next five years. So the dates are Saturday, February 27th, from 10:00 a.m. until noon, or Wednesday, March 2nd, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. We promise not to just speak numbers at you, but to have a conversation with you about where we are, where we've been, and with you about where you'd like to see us go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions before we go?
Can you tell us about the mini golf?
The, oh, yeah, except that it's this Saturday, yes? So the friends are hosting an indoor putt-putt golf, and we're going to have music. This is a very family-friendly event. We encourage you all to come. Local businesses have sponsored the holes. There's prizes. There's a hole-in-one, so music, refreshments, and mini golf in the stacks.
The school board is super into our sponsor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's Sunday at?
1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Wonderful.
Says the internet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, we hope you make it.
Must be.
Anything else you want to put me on the spot about?
I think we're good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, sure.
We are the Cub Scouts. We meet in the Ferndale Drayton Church, and we're here, I'm, sorry, I'm the Cub Master Devanna, and I'm here with, sorry.
Ian.
Xavier.
Zach.
Nick.
And we're here to talk about our Pinewood Derby coming up on the 18th and the 19th. We would like to invite you all to join us in making cars and just having a good evening with us. So the boys are going to talk about how much fun they have. Real quick, come on, hurry up.
Um, it's super fun, like, you get to have trophies, and.
Show them your car.
I get to make cars, and you get to paint them.
You basically get, like, you start with a block of wood for the car, then you make the car, then you race it in the race, and there's a bunch of trophies and medals you can win.
And we just really have a good time. We like, as a pack, we try to teach the boys respect. We teach them to, you know, get involved with the community and just, you know, have a good time, but, you know, learn a lot and do a lot. We take the guys camping three times during our, we, we meet during the school year. We do not meet all year long like a lot of troops. So during that time, we have three campouts that we do. We also have other celebrations, like the Cub Scout birthday that we celebrate. We just have our blue and gold. So we were just hoping you guys would come out and join us, decorate a car. Small donation for, for the kids is five bucks, and we hope to see you guys there. Guys, say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have a Cub Scout at home that's really much looking forward to the Pinewood Derby race, so.
It's like the fun point of it. Parents really get into it.
All right, do we have anyone else that would like to address us for public comment tonight?
No running to the podium, so we will close public comments, and then we can move on
to the consent agenda, which is item six, and in that we have, oh, let me look at this one. Is this through correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have six, I'm sorry, five items on the consent agenda. We have 6.1, the request to approve minutes at the special meeting of January 20th, 2016. 6.2, the request to approve minutes of the regular meeting, January 20th, 2016. 6.3, the request to approve bills and accounts. 6.4, the request to approve resignations and new hires, and 6.5, the request to approve drug-free grant contracts. So does anyone want to remove any of these items to address it later in the meeting or at a future date? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented, moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, and roll call, please.
Deacon Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
President LaPach?
Yes. And with six yeses and zero nos, the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved, meaning we can now move on to the action items. Number seven, the first one being 7.1, the request to approve the transportation contract for a one-year renewal, IGA.
So as you know, we have a combined transportation department between Ferndale and Hazel Park. Last year, the board approved where Ferndale will manage Hazel Park. It's actually been working very well. The income that we have from it have paid for the leases of our buses, so we have six brand-new buses for our children this year, and so we have less cost now to maintain. So it has been a benefit to Ferndale, plus having the extra Hazel Park buses when we need to do field trips, when we need to do after-school athletics. It's given us more capacity and has allowed us to work together with Hazel Park. So, and it's been very good on their end. They've been able to get the cost savings they need, and at times, they get to use our buses, so it's been a very good agreement. So all we're doing is extending the current IGA for the next year, so no change to current IGA, just continuing it for another year.
Okay. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the transportation contract for one more year, moved by Ms. Hart, seconded by Ms. Butters. Any discussion or questions on the request? No? Well, I'm glad to hear it worked out well, and that we get to have another year of it working out well, so.
Yep. It's been very good for us and for our employees.
Good. Seeing no further questions or comments, we can move forward with the roll call.
Hart?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Deacon Crowe?
Yes.
President LaPach?
Yes. With six yes and no votes, the motion passes, and the request to approve the transportation contract for one-year renewal is approved. Moving on to 7.2, the request to approve the K-5 science kits.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm actually passing out some math books right now, but when I get to that item, you already have them in the motion.
Are you ready for X?
No, but, yeah.
I have yet to find X. I keep looking.
See me tomorrow. All right, so again, thank you for allowing us to bring our work in front of you tonight. About a month and a half ago, a group of teachers from every grade level, K-5, met to look at our science curriculum, and they worked hard for a day and realigned our current units with the Cambridge philosophy, as well as the new Michigan Science Standards, and the proposal is the result of that work. So our strategic plan calls for equality, achievement, and equity. By realigning the science framework to a blend of the Cambridge mindset and the Michigan Science Standards, we're addressing all three components of the strategic plan. By updating the elementary science framework and resources, we're ensuring that all students have quality instructional materials to ensure learning, which will lead to higher achievement on local and standardized assessments. Finally, the realignment will allow all classes in each grade level to be doing the same science unit simultaneously, which will provide for more equity in the experience of all elementary science students. I would like to point out that unlike English, Language Arts, the Cambridge program, primary science standards, don't really align one-to-one on every grade level. So when I talk about the Cambridge philosophy for science, it's more about the attributes of a Cambridge learner and of a Cambridge teacher that we're trying to instill in the students, using the Battle Creek Science Kits to develop the skills and the attributes sought in the Cambridge program. So I wanted to make that clear. Currently, our elementary science instruction is done with kits that rotate between the two schools, so, you know, at any one point in time, we might have first graders at one building doing new plants, and at the other building doing insects. With the combination of all grades into one building next year, it doesn't make sense to keep having half of each grade do one unit while the other half does another. So, so we're proposing, again, moving to Battle Creek Kits, which, even though they're not 100% aligned with the new Michigan Science Standards, that process has begun, and one of the things we looked at in our day-long work session was the cost of upgrading our current Delta Kits versus the cost of purchasing brand-new Battle Creek Kits, with the idea that those Battle Creek Kits would need to be tweaked a little bit moving forward to be fully aligned to the Michigan Science Standards, and it's far more cost-effective to purchase the new Battle Creek Kits, as opposed to updating the old Delta Kits. So that's kind of the proposal in a nutshell. We ask you to consider the adoption of the Battle Creek Science Kits with a Cambridge land.
I will entertain a moment in just a moment, but if you guys want to go, you can. You don't have to stay. If you want to, you're welcome to, but I didn't want you to think you're obligated to stay for the whole meeting. But thank you for coming out.
And I think I didn't mention today, it's March 18th, and my.
Yep.
I'm going to make my card.
So now I will entertain a motion to approve the K-5 science kits, moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any discussion or questions? No? They look good to me.
I just have a statement. I mean, it's always really a pleasure to be a part of the Achievement Committee and listen to how well-thought-out it is, and how much time and effort the teachers put in to making these choices, and how they really are keeping the students' success, and how the students will respond to all these materials in every decision they make, so I just want to say it's, it's really well done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No one else has a question or comment, then we can move forward with the roll call.
Camiller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Deacon Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
President LaPach?
Yes. And with six yes and no nos, the motion has passed, and the K-5 science kit request to approve this K-5 science kits is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to 7.3, the request to approve the math K-5 textbook.
All right. Welcome again. Thank you. So.
And now, Mr. Nace.
Thanks very much. Long time no see. Achievement is a central tenet of Ferndale Public Schools' strategic plan. All students can learn what they need if we have high expectations and the right support from us. That's a direct quote from the strategic plan. Part of the right support is providing proper learning resources. Envision 2.0 aligns with the Ferndale Public Schools' mission and goal by providing a well-rounded program that will allow all students to attain the highest educational standards. by providing a well-rounded program that will allow all students to attain the highest educational standards." Furthermore, Envision 2.0 provides multiple intervention resources, which will guarantee each and every student access to the mathematics called for in the Common Core State Standards. So Envision 2.0 is the math resource that we feel will best provide achievement and equity for all students attending Ferndale Elementary School. The current elementary math resource is not fully aligned to the Common Core State Standards, which is why we decided we needed to look at new products. We evaluated four products in total, two of which went through a full evaluation through the IMAT rubric. Envision 2.0 scored 107 out of 108 points. The other product that we looked at, Math Expressions, scored 90. So it was a clear-cut winner at every grade level. And for the first time in the five or six years that I've been working with math teachers in this district, elementary teachers are excited about the math product that we're ready to put in front of them. It was really exciting to be a part of that process and to see their excitement and eagerness to be kind of the new wave of math instruction with Envision 2.0, so.
It's always odd to have more people come to your second and third meetings than your first meeting based on hearing about information. Like, we were like, why are all these people here? I mean, we're getting that giddy over the product.
Math teachers and excitement and giddy are not normally words you hear within the same sentence.
No, they're not, but we were, so that was fun. So I'm excited to bring the proposal to the board and we hope that you consider it.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Mr. O'Donnell? No. Okay. Are you still moving? We.
I'll defer to the Achievement Committee.
Okay. So moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
So with the actual physical book, is it one per year that each student gets to use the book?
Each grade has two of those student workbooks.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's split into two different volumes to make it more manageable for the students.
But it's tear-out based?
Yes, it is. Our proposal from Pearson includes six years of that consumable workbook.
Good resource. Do we get to take these home and do practice our math?
If you bring it back completed next month, absolutely.
Mr. Mays will have it graded for the next month.
Any other questions?
A personal question, does this mean no more Study Island?
No, we will still be using Study Island.
All right.
It does mean no more everyday math, though.
Okay, okay.
Sounds like I need to have a conversation with you about Study Island now.
Maybe the littler people in my household, though. Or me, or me, okay. No more questions or comments, then we can move forward with the roll call.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
David Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
President Lottasch?
Yes. And with six yeses and no noes, the motion has passed and the request for the K-5 textbook has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item 7.4, the request to approve the Spanish 3-5 curriculum.
Hi there. Tonight, I'd like to share with you the information about implementing grades 3 through 5 Spanish instruction starting in the 16th, 17th school year. The purpose of implementing a 3-5 curriculum is threefold. First, we want to draw upon Ferndale's history of having a strong world language program, which went by the wayside for a variety of reasons. Second, we'd like to prepare our younger students for world language instruction in their middle and high school years so that they can strengthen their basic knowledge. And third, we want to make Ferndale a district destination for families to receive early language instruction that's coupled with a rich international experience through a variety of supplementary programs. One of the data sources that we have in regards to Spanish curriculum is that our strategic plan states we want to, we are intent on graduating engaged global citizens who give back to their communities. We will celebrate our diversity, knowing that our students will thrive in a world that looks much like their community. Implementing a 3 through 5 language instruction will drive Ferndale towards a school of embracing and celebrating diversity. Some of the key components of our curriculum, our Spanish curriculum program for next year, it will be a push-in model in which the teachers, the Spanish teacher who is hired, will visit each classroom two to three times a week, 30 to 40 minutes a week, to deliver Spanish instruction. Once we have the amount of classrooms and things like that, we'll be able to give you more specifics into that. That's all part of the circuit-schedule play as well. It is likely that the teaching proficiency through reading and storytelling acquisition model will be instituted once the Spanish teacher is hired. Acquiring a language is very different than learning a language. Acquiring is something that happens to you instead of something that you make happen. When you learn how to speak your first language, you acquire it naturally by listening to other people speak it around you in a long time, not by studying it. A few of the part, few things that we need to know about the 3-5 curriculum. For the first year, the 3-5 curriculum will be the same since students have not had instruction prior to 16th, 17th school year. However, as the students progress through the grades, we will add fourth and fifth grade curriculum to build upon the skills that are learned. In addition, we have reached out to International Institute of Metro Detroit to obtain a grant which will allow us to provide before and after, after and during school enrichment opportunities for all of our elementary students, pre-K through fifth grade. This program, if approved, which we have been in contact with them and they're very interested in working with Ferndale, will include an international summer camp, after-school international club, fashion show, and a community of celebration of cultures within the evening. And they really would like to partner with us. In addition, students at our lower elementary campus will be exposed through music, art, and song to basic Spanish vocabulary, but they will not receive push-in instruction until third grade. In your packet, you received the information about the curriculum. Once we hire, post and hire for the Spanish teacher, then we will have him or her put their own twist to that as well. We've worked very hard with Oakland Schools and Irma Torres, who was the person who instituted our world language program back in its heyday here. And she's been very helpful and is willing to continue to help us as we move forward. Any questions regarding the 3-5 Spanish program?
Okay, I think we can move forward with the motion to approve the 3-5 curriculum for Spanish. Moved by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any questions or comments?
I was at this committee meeting and I especially enjoyed the discussion regarding the Spanish program. I thought that this puts our district in such a great position to get back on track with where we need to be with Spanish and with world languages.
I just want to thank Dina and Tom and, if you didn't know, Beth, who's given birth. So I guess you didn't know that. But, and Lauren and the whole curriculum team for just all the work and all these different curriculums, especially the Spanish, for bringing that back into Ferndale in such a way that it's not just superficial, that it really is educational. So just very happy that the team's been able to do that. And I guess I will forward you the information on Jack's birth.
I know, I'm just really excited to be bringing Spanish back. I know Ferndale was on the cutting edge when it brought Spanish to the district. And now we're doing it again, so thank you. If no other questions or comments, we can move forward with the roll call.
Butters?
Yes.
David Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
President Lottasch?
Yes. Six yeses and no noes, the motion passes and the request to approve Spanish 3-5 curriculum has been approved. Thank you very much. And then, moving on to the 7.5, request to approve K-5 media curriculum.
We call this Media 2.0. After working with the Instructional Transition Committee and teachers and our Achievement Committee, we started thinking about some of the things that we're really missing in our elementary settings. And we started talking about updating our media literacy. So the purpose of Media 2.0 is to equip our students with necessary skills needed for success in the 21st century, including information literacy, media literacy, and technology literacy. Students will develop skills in critical thinking, communication, digital responsibility, creativity, and collaboration within this program. So now when students go to our media centers, it won't be just to hear a story read aloud or to check out the Just Right book. With our Readers Workshop curriculum that's in full effect now, our students have the ability to do that with their classroom teachers. So we want to rethink and reimagine what media center looks like. So when students go down to the media center, starting in 16th, 17th, they will be working with Lauren, as well as our media assistant and classroom teachers. And they will be learning more about digital citizenship. They will have opportunities to do Makerspace. And they will have, we are aligning our project-based learning topics with activities that they will do within the, in the media center on the computers and technology. So we're really rethinking what our students will do down there. They'll be on the computers more often, different types of technology. They'll be able to learn more about how to use and operate the computer and things like that. We'll begin to implement some coding activities, things like, all of those things that our children are wanting to know and learn. And the more we get them in front of things like that, the more comfortable they are when they go back to work on their own or if they go back to do high-stakes testing and things like that. So we're really just reforming, adding media time to be what our kids want and need.
And just something from the technology end. I've been meeting with Ryan Velze to make sure that we have all the proper technology support for the curriculum. And as we have a number of Chromebooks that are out at our alternative ed site, Mr. Velze has been able to find a way to take some of the laptops that aren't as usable for the elementary kids, because they don't fit as well as the Chromebooks, and to be able to use those at the alternative ed site and then bring more Chromebooks over for the elementary kids. So it is a win-win, so we should have more technology in the elementaries. And it'll be to a point where students will have use of a machine almost all the time. So that's our goal, is that whenever a teacher wants to be able to use a computer or use a device, either an iPad or a Chromebook, that they're always available for their use. So we're increasing our level of technology moving forward.
Any questions? Question, but I do have a comment. We could then move forward with the motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve, moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Ms. Hart. And comment?
Well, I'm on the Achievement Committee and I just want to say I'm very excited about Media 2.0 and bringing technology into the schools to just make sure that our students are fully capable of functioning, not just as students, but just as citizens, because you can't go anywhere nowadays without touching a computer in some form or fashion. So I'm really excited about this being implemented into our curriculum. So thank you.
Anyone else? I know I was really excited to see this process move forward with the kids. I know they love their books, but having that extra time to work on the computer and learn about digital citizenry and coding, that's invaluable, so.
They'll be a great balance.
All right, so no more questions or comments, we can move forward with the roll call.
David Crowe?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
President Lottasch?
Yes. With six yeses and no noes, the motion passes and the request to approve the K-5 media curriculum or Media 2.0 has been approved. Moving on to 7.6, the request to approve first read of the Bylaw 0142.3 regarding term limit, or terms, not term limits, terms.
Before I do that, I just, I know, I want to let Mr. Mays and Ms. Rusholo go if they need to go. I know Ms. Rusholo is a sick child at home, so I don't want to make her stay for any longer than what she needs to. Yes. So again, thank you both for all the work and getting all the teachers on page, which is a great thing. All right.
All right. Bylaw 142.3 is something that we've all been talking about for quite a while now. It is, and this is just the first read, but this is to ultimately move back to the way we used to be, having four-year terms on the school board. So it would mean after this next election, which would have to be for a six-year term, we would thereafter move into four-year terms for the school board. So if anyone has any questions or comments or concerns, it'll be brought up at the Governance Committee meeting again in a couple of weeks. And then it'll be brought back for a second read and ultimately, hopefully, approval. So anything anyone wants to talk about tonight or concerns?
Just one thing to check into at the Governance Committee meeting. I think, if I remember right, that it's legislated that the terms have to begin on January 1st, as opposed to some other offices that take them back soon after the November election. But if we could just confirm that, because it does make sense to, it used to make sense to have it on January 1st. It's not like we have to travel to far distant places after the election to take office.
All right.
And I know a lot of cities are reviewing this for their council terms to have the term of office begin three to four weeks after the elections.
That makes sense. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, so you're thinking that you would prefer that we stay with January 1st? Or you're saying it would be better to, why should we wait? We should go.
I think the, just confirm that that's what the law requires, is January 1st.
Right first, that the law requires that.
Oh, and if it doesn't, then let's look at maybe changing that. I see.
Okay, I will, I'll give a confirmation of that.
Okay. Good point. Okay, so that will be brought back around again after we check the statute. Then it means we can move into informational items. The first one, the superintendent report.
So as you know, we've been exploring the possibility of a sinking fund. We have an ad hoc committee that's been meeting regarding this. And we've, as we continue to gather information, we're looking to see what is a necessary item and what's a nicety. So we're going to be having Plant Moran's report soon of all the building assessments. But we do have the initial report, we have the roofing assessment, we have Doug Mitchell from GCA, who is their eastern section engineer, who's from New York, who's been through all our buildings, doing our asset tagging, who's been letting us know what are some of the major deficiencies in our mechanicals so we don't get hit with another issue like we have now with Roosevelt, where we're pushed into replacing boilers instead of paring it out. So I've included in the board packet just some initial items of what would be if we were to do one mil and 1.5 and two mils. That'll be something the committee is considering, you know, to what level would we need to ask our residents to help support. We want to be very judicious about what we ask and make sure that we do have enough to maintain buildings, because we do not want to take money away from kids to maintain the buildings. And we will have, after this, after this summer, we'll have about a million left in bond funds. About a half million of that money, I'd like to continue to earmark towards technology, because the sinking fund cannot do technology. So that we do have an ongoing pot of money. We will have the money coming in from the sale of Jefferson and whatever money that comes in from Taft and Wilson. But over the course of the next 10 years, which will be the next time probably before we we could go out for a bond, we're going to need to do replacements, we're going to need to do upkeeps. On the twenty-one million dollars that the community spent, we need to make sure we upkeep what we've put in. We don't want the citizens to have paid for a new air conditioner and then us not upkeep it properly to make it last for its life. So, that's what we're doing at the moment. There's a, a lot of things that aren't very flashy, you know, caulking windows and various other things. Yes, Ms. Cramiller?
No, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm checking off stuff in my head.
Okay. So, you know, they, things like per se football field replacement, in the next ten years, at some point, that football field has lived out its life, and for the safety of the kids, the marching band, the football players, the soccer players, the Lawrence Tech soccer players that we rent the field out to, that brings income to the district, you know, those things will, will need to be done, as well as, as just general maintenance. We don't have any general maintenance money. That is money that comes out of the classroom. So, when per se the heating unit above the band room over by the middle school gym, when that motor blew out in January, that has to come out of general fund, as opposed to coming per se out of a sinking fund, so I could put that general fund money into a classroom. So, that's where we're at. We'll be reviewing all the recommendations from Plant Moran, and then our goal is, in March, to come to the board with a recommendation of what to do moving forward. So, that's where we are in process. So, any, any questions or clarifications I can give to the board?
I think fixing the locker rooms alone will pass. I mean, you get more complaints about those locker rooms than I think anything else.
We, we do have some hand dryers that the Henry Ford Museum has called, and they would like them. So, yes, there's some, some things that we just haven't been able to do, and be good over the course of the next ten years to continue to upgrade our facilities, keep them in, in the best shape for our students and our staff. All right, that is, that's going over tonight.
Okay. We had no pulled consent agenda items, so we move into number ten now, which is Eagles' Points of Pride.
And I just want to echo the, the sinking fund question quickly, and thank the committee. We've had a, a committee of some board members and a bunch of community members, a bunch of members of councils and commissions from, from nearby cities, and a bunch of those who applied for the school board position. In fact, I think everybody who applied for the school board has come to those meetings, and it's been really nice to get them there, and they've been really helpful. So, I mean, it, it sort of confirmed our notion that we would have been happy with any, we're happiest with. But, what a great group of people who applied for this, for this position, and what a wealth of experience we had to, we had to choose from. And including, one of, one of our board members has agreed, if I'm not mistaken, a former architect is good, is, is going through all of our blueprints voluntarily to make them usable for us as a result of this process. So, I'm really excited to work with this committee, and I appreciate the work they're putting in, some, some pretty long meetings voluntarily to help make sure that this is the right thing for the right amount.
I guess I can go. I always like to highlight the, our business community, and I want to just put an event on your, all of your calendar, which is the Ferndale Rotary is always raising money for scholarships for students at Ferndale, and they're having something called the Winter Warm-Up. It's on Thursday, March tenth, and it's, it's one of those things where you get a bowl and you get to taste different soups, you know, and there's a cash bar, and there's, I think they probably will have some kind of silent auction. The first, it looks, it says here that the first forty, no, first a hundred guests will get to take home a homemade ceramic bowl, so, it's a nice event. Oh, and it's at, let me tell you where it's at, it's at the Red Door nightclub, which is, does anyone know? I'm thinking that it might, it's, it's actually, it was, it was twisted, and now it's.
Really?
Has it?
I might be wrong. Does anybody know?
Do they?
It looks right.
I think, yeah, I think, I know I've been hearing on the radio.
Was it twisted very long ago?
Well, I think it might still be twisted, but maybe part of it is the red door now. Pardon? Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-two nine oh one Woodward, so I think that is right.
Yeah, it's, it's just sort of a different sort of, anyway, that's.
It is the back door, so it's, it's a long.
March tenth. March tenth.
Do we know what time?
Which is Thursday, and it's like six to nine, or something like that, so, yeah, six to nine. I think there might be a password.
You have to have a spoon.
No.
And how much, do you want how much the, the bowl is?
I, no, I think that, it says here the tickets, I think, are forty bucks, but check out the Winter Warm-Up twenty sixteen Facebook page, and it'll keep you up to date on the details there, but it's, you know, the Rotary is always doing good things for us, so.
All right. Thanks. Do you want to go next? Anyone else?
So, just to reiterate something that was talked about earlier about our, our wrestling team, Kobe Falls qualified to compete in the state championship at the Palace. It's first weekend in March. This makes the eighteenth straight year a wrestler from Ferndale will compete in state championship. So, when you consider our number of athletes and, and especially the division we're in in Oakland County, it's a great feat for the coach and for the kids. So, if you haven't had a, a chance to, to see our kids in a wrestling match, they do a great job. And more importantly, the coaches really work on not only building their wrestling skill, but building their skills as a person and their teamwork. So, just hats off to, to the coaches and to the kids.
And I wanted to reiterate, I, I'm super excited we brought Cambridge in, and I think it's going to do incredible things for, for all of our kids and all of our, our students. And the fact that Cambridge actually was so excited to work with Ferndale, and we have two scholarships to send teachers to England to learn about the Cambridge Way and about the global perspective, I think that says a lot about the district and the administration and all the teachers that are working really hard for our kids. So, just wanted to acknowledge that Jason Gillespie and Lindsay Gonska are going to be spending a week in England over spring break to learn about the Cambridge Way and then bring it back and share all the knowledge with the teachers here. So, we're moving even faster with sharing the knowledge with the other teachers, which is really exciting.
We actually had another school district in today with a team visiting with our teachers and watching the classrooms to see if they, if they want to adopt. So, we've started to, started to have other people come and, and look to us.
Great.
They can do it, but they can't be the first.
That's right. You can't be our, in our county, no.
I actually have two. My first one is, we have a senior here at our high school, Rashimiya Powell, who was acknowledged as Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club of Oakland and Macomb County. So, she said in, part of her statement was, you know, just taking the AP courses and the honors courses really prepared her, and she's really, you know, thankful for the opportunities, not only that she's had at Ferndale High School, but just, you know, everything that she's learned as being a student here in, in the Boys and Girls Club. So, I'm just really proud that she's representing our district as the Youth of the Year for the county and for Boys and Girls Club. And then my second one is, I attended at Coolidge Intermediate. Mr. Bruner has a monthly meeting, the morning meeting, and it was, it's usually the, the last Friday of the month, and it's an assembly where the kids are all brought together for the whole school, and he plays music, and he gets them really, you know, energetic, energized and hyped up, and he talks about different character traits. And they do skits based on the character trait, and one of the character traits was integrity, and just teaching the kids about integrity and what does that mean? And then they spend that whole month just exemplifying those traits, and students are awarded and presented with different prizes based on their behavior and the ways that they, you know, exemplify those traits. And I was really excited just to be a part of that assembly, and he encourages and welcomes community members and parents and others who are able to attend the last Friday of every month.
My point of pride this month is our community, and there was a lot of stuff going on this month, but I'm in, specifically, I'm going to talk about the clothing swap that the JFK PTA puts on, where they do it at the Loving Touch, and tons of people come and bring clothes they no longer want, and it's organized impeccably by a group of volunteers, and then everyone goes forward. Monique and I have been doing head of there for years, and so we get to be like, like these quiet observers, like on the side watching, and it's really wonderful to watch. So many parents and people in our community, and the crazy, every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and this year, I'm not sure that I headed any parents. So, like, the amazing thing about this event is that instead of keeping on tapping into all of us to get more money from, they're, the people in our community think of ways to move outside, to do really cool things, to involve other people into our schools. And it was really nice talking to everybody, and Cresta Johnson, of course, is like a rock star, so, yeah, it was awesome.
My point of pride is much more mundane than that, but I just wanted to thank the staff and administrators who went back through all the transcripts and had the, you know, hopefully with the computer, added the honor, extra honors points for honors in AP classes in the high school, and so that's all rolled out now, and everyone can go on to my staff and check their high school students' newly adjusted GPA.
Oh, I bet that's really exciting.
And, as a, as a applying for scholarships.
Right. And if you took some of those classes, like I would have been like crazy stoked, like with, I was a junior, and all of a sudden, my GPA got a little bump.
So, it's really going to help, it's really going to help our students be able to compete for scholarships and other programs that look at GPA outside of college admissions, where they usually adjust GPA for those things, but a lot of, a lot of people don't. So, thank you to Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Sheldon for bringing that to us about a year ago.
Glad, glad we can help the students and keep them, keep them on par with everybody else that's out there competing.
If Jackie, you have another one?
Yes, you can.
I'm going to pull a Kevin. I was.
Sidebar first, or?
No.
Recession.
Okay. Okay, so, over the weekend, maybe on Sunday, I learned about an event that's taking place this Wednesday evening at CASA. It's their open house, and I learned about it by happenstance from my husband, who had heard about it from my daughter, and I said to my daughter today, you know, how did you hear about that, blah, blah, blah? And I'm thinking, ah, shoot, this is another, another time where, you know, CASA is this little secret that's happening. But, by gosh, we all got an email today from the district about this event. In the past, like Kevin always likes to highlight, in the past, that's how it used to be, right? Now, I'm so thankful that we are spreading the word about this event, about this program that we have in our district, making sure that people know about CASA and, you know, all it has to offer. And so, I, you know, I was pleasantly surprised that, you know, at first I was thinking, ah, you know, people are going to be, it's going to be Thursday, and you're going to start hearing from parents, how could we didn't know about this? You know, I wish I had known, but in fact, we did email them today, and so I was glad about that, and I wanted to lift that up as a point of pride, that this is something that we are making sure that people know about, that we haven't always done that in the past.
And the consortium of districts have been working to evaluate those classes and, and look to see what are the needs that might be missing for our students to fill those gaps, so, it's, it's being revamped little by little.
The new era, moving forward with communication.
Circle.
Anybody else want to?
No.
You're good? Okay. So, the next regular board meeting is Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, right here at seven o'clock, and with that, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh six.